...by Mr. Zuchel and Ed, stay remain standing for the flight to fly.
Yes, in 1992, John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation that May 15 would be Peace Officers Memorial Day. He also stated that whatever day that occurred in a week would be Police Memorial Week. As of yesterday, 54 officers, including 53 males and one female, have been killed in the line of duty. At some point, those names are going to be added to the fallen officers walled down in Washington DC. So, whenever he officer goes to work, he hopes to come home in the same way he went. But unfortunately, those 54 people will not. And they will leave behind children, brothers, sisters, mothers and fathers, and wives. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment in silence for those 54 folks and hope it remains at that number. Thank you.
Mr. President?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hanlon, I think we'll call that we're all here. And we'll move on to courtesy of the floor. Courtesy of the floor is for issues that are not on the agenda tonight. So if you have an issue that is not on the agenda, courtesy of the floor.
Hello again. I was here two weeks ago, Mary Nolan, Johannesburg. And we were going to get an update from the traffic department, but before we do get that update, I would like a few minutes to just talk. My husband and I moved to Allentown six years ago. We first rented and then purchased in the West End because we thought it would be a great place to raise a family. We loved the proximity to the park, seemingly quiet neighborhood and burgeoning downtown. Once we had children, I became acutely aware of just how not quiet Chu Street can be. Everyone from fearless college students barreling down the street to people using it as a quick cut through from Cedar Crest to Odd Streets, since there isn't a single stop sign or reason to slow down for over half a mile. We then engaged the city to work together for a solution. I stand here three years later because I discovered our local government is completely dismissive of the ongoing traffic problem. In one of the traffic department workers' words, he has hundreds of other issues. And as I mentioned in the last meeting, I first reached out three years ago. I engaged our district councilwoman, Ms. Appa, Mike Schlossberg, our state representative, the police department, and of course, the traffic division, which everyone seems to think was the right place to turn to deal with the issue. When I do get a response from this department, it's never been solution oriented. It only belittles my complaints and makes false promises. In this case, we're still waiting for the speed boards that were promised over a year ago. I've learned these promises are completely empty, which is why we are here. Literally, the only thing that has happened since I began this quest is that the street has been repaved and painted, which has made the problem worse. Trust me, I don't think speed boards are going to solve the problem. I'm hoping they at least make a small dent. All of the other suggestions that I have, all of the other solutions that I've suggested along with my neighbors have been shot down. This is the only thing that they were willing to do, and now they aren't even following through. Many of my other Chu Street neighbors, and yes, it makes a difference if you're living on the actual street, like we do, and witness day in and day out, how big a problem this is. But I'm one of the few people in this neighborhood with small children, which is why I'm here vocalizing my concern. So instead of the traffic department making excuses and trying to make it seem like I'm imagining this problem, I'd like to see a solution. In closing, I'd like to make an important point that I hope the council and city government will ponder. We would like to think that there are efforts to be made in Allentown to keep the neighborhoods as family friendly as possible. Community issues like this and the failure to address them make Allentown less attractive to young families like ours. Add these small but fixable issues to bigger concerns for families such as high taxes in the public schools, and it's no wonder most of our friends have chosen to live in neighboring suburbs rather than the city proper. If Allentown is serious about urban revitalization, address the issues and concerns that make it more livable for families like mine. Tackling a small concern such as a neighborhood's traffic problem would give the impression that Allentown is serious about attracting families back from the suburbs. Over time, I can't help but think that this would strengthen the community and help improve some of the major problems such as schools and tax revenue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think last time she was here, you were just here a couple of weeks ago. There was some discussion about speed boards, and I guess you have an update?
As I said, two weeks ago when I was here, we did have the plan ready, and it was going to be submitted to PennDOT. It has been submitted to PennDOT, and they have the paperwork. We will be awaiting their response as far as whether or not they can be placed and where the placements will be. But we proposed areas where we could place it, and it's up to them right now whether or not they're going to give us a permit for it.
So since this has been talked about for over a year, I'm just curious when they were submitted to PennDOT?
I think you said when you were here the last time we talked about it, they've been submitted.
Since then.
Possibly what we can do is get the note to the chief of police and maybe get some speed timing done out there, see what we can do.
And they are aware of the issue. As far as what they're doing out there, I'm not sure. As far as that, but they had said that they were going to be monitoring that area.
As much as they could.
Yeah.
So they did it once, because they have other problems. They kept directing me back to the traffic department, so I just keep getting bounced back, back and forth.
Who's directing you? I mean, you're just calling in and talking to the unit?
The police department said we'll check, we'll do speed checks when we can, which is not very frequently. To find a long-term solution, you need to talk to the traffic department, which is what I've done.
We will get a message to the chief of police, and he will have the PSA captain contact you. I think Mr. Hanlon has your information, and you can deal with the PSA captain, and we can set something up.
I mean, I think it's understandable why I feel like I'm shouting to the winds when I talk to the traffic department.
I think when you say you've been dealing with it for over a year, I can understand that you kind of feel that way. That's why I think we'll get a resolution if the chief is involved and the captain in charge of that area town, rather than you just calling in and maybe talking to a clerk or an officer sitting at the phone.
I'm just looking for something longer term than one speed check, once, to just pacify me.
Well, and we're not doing one to pacify you, but they will do one there, then they'll move to the other areas in the city, but then they need to come back again. It's something that has to be followed up on.
Right, but what I'm hoping for is the traffic department to actually do something and not just say it.
Well, that's what we're hoping for too. That's what I'm saying. I think if we direct the chief, the PSA captain will have it done. And if not, then he can come and answer to this body why it isn't, or he can answer to the mayor why it hasn't been done.
So if I'm understanding Craig correctly, we have to wait for PennDOT to say that they can do this, so it's not even a sure thing?
Correct. That's correct. Ms. Appa wants to address something.
I'd just like to make a statement. I was involved from the beginning. You were the first, I was the first you called. That very afternoon when I spoke with you, Mr. Messinger was on vacation. He was in his yard, and I asked him to come over. He came over immediately and spoke with you. Then we had a huge meeting with all your neighbors, and Captain Vengello was there to speak. We had Nelson come over. We had three meetings with you, and we've been trying very hard. They repaved everything. You asked not to have it done, which is something that the city of Allentown is going to say, well, no, this resident doesn't want it done, and all the rest of the block did. So we had 30 residents there. Mr. Messinger did everything, and I did everything in our power to try to get this resolved. It takes time. You can't just put a stop sign. You asked for a stop sign. We said we couldn't do that. You asked for those speed bumps. That can't be done. There were so many things that we tried to approach and do. We widened the street. We did everything we could possibly do. Now it's up to the state. And you keep coming in here and blaming Mr. Messinger and the city for not doing anything. And I have to disagree with you. We're trying our best. Thank you.
And I personally think it's a lot of talk, and that's my opinion, and I've been here twice.
Can I just say one quick thing? I spoke with Mr. Messinger in October, and he said it was submitted. And then when we had a meeting with the police and Nelson, he said it wasn't submitted, the applications. And now we're finding out that the application was just submitted since we had come here two weeks ago.
If I remember correctly, at the last meeting, there were some changes made to the application process. If I recall correctly.
What was previously allowed was submitted. And then we were told that it has changed since then. It had to be redone and resubmitted.
Paul Talk.
May I add something? I would suggest that since you know this is a state issue, probably just talk to the state legislators.
Well, would that be Mike Schlossberg?
Well, that's one of them. But you also have Senator Brown, Pat Brown. Representative Schwire, probably talk to as many as you can. Schlossberg, yes, yes, Schlossberg, probably Pat Brown would be another one.
Okay.
Just trying to help.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad we parted records this evening, and Mr. President here said a record. He's been at three straight meetings. We never saw this, I don't think. Did I correct the minister? My concern is the financial addition of the city of Allentown. The mayor mentioned 3.5% of the burden of the arc. Mrs. Oplu, in her article, which is a very good article, mentioned 5 million. Mr. Hahn and Mr. Hunziger mentioned it. Mr. Hunziger and Mr. Hahn always come before the city council, put ideas. How we can help the financial vision of budget. I haven't seen city councils, not one. I started on city council. Mr. Gruddy was part of it. And I started on city council. I had to do a lot with selection. How to raise additional money from different areas. I haven't seen councils like this. Even Mr. Gruddy, being chairman of the finance committee, I thought he would be doing this, because we are familiar with government. But what happens, I keep reading, we're in worse in financial edition. Area, worse, worse, and now we read about LCA. Where are we going now? Are we kind of, you know, a back of a city? I hope, I keep sending city council ideas how to raise money. You just brought up one. An ordinance came up the other week, or it was a bill, where we're going to get money from the park authority on fines. On street sweeping, they give us three months. We sweep streets, throw months at a year. What happens the other nine months we see? I'm asking you to have the city controller audit the park net very. Find out what happens the other nine months it receives. We need this money, Mr. Chairman. No matter what point out, we have a financial problem. Mrs. Oplu pointed out we have a financial problem. There's so many things in, there was a foreclosure law that was passed that lists that any, all people who mortgages have to pay a fee of this city of Allentown. Their property for close. City of Allentown isn't enforced. It's laying here. Nobody enforced it. There's money laying here. We can, there's money to balance it by. I can go on and on. There's something, as you know, Mr. President, I submit you now. I know, I think, but it's happening. You don't make a read on. But they're there for, to help the financial addition of budget, because I was in the finance committee. I was the chairman. And Mr. Gruddy always just submit all questions to me that I'm familiar with the plans, financial budget and everything else. But you guys ain't doing nothing. You guys just start jumping into the fire there and helping to sit in the balance. How we can reduce this deficit that we're facing now, and thank you.
May I, Mr. President, may I just, my presence. Thank you, Mr. Hirschman, for coming over. And as you know, the last meeting we had, previous meeting, not the last one, we had a gentleman here from the state's early intervention program. So we are going, we're following through on that. We also had a meeting last, this Monday, this past Monday, where we talked about the five-year plan that you've been looking for. So we're making progress on that as well. I have spoken with the mayor since then, and he has some things that he's working on. I'm sure when he's ready, you'll talk about it. And things are being done. I kind of disagree with you in regards, I disagree with you when you say that nothing is being done. We are doing things, and we found out that the deficit, the structural deficit is actually less than $4 million, about $4 million, I would say, versus what people were saying that it was $10 million. And we're going to continue to work on that, you know, per year. And I think Mr. Mayor, Mayor has some information that I think would be very beneficial to what we're trying to do. So that's going to come in time, but we are working. For you to say that we're not doing anything is totally untrue.
I don't think so.
Yes, we also look, let me just finish this point.
Mr. President, can I ask you one question on the five-year plan?
Sure, you can.
When you started city council, did you receive a financial sign four years thick, four pages thick? Or was it 60-page or 70-page thick? Thank you.
Doesn't make any, well. What we have now is versus what we had before.
They were, they came up with a recommendation. They were, I was saying to my captain.
How long have we, how long have it been since we got the five-year plan?
Well, you guys did the mirror, the hook.
Well, we asked for it many times, as you know.
This guy, this guy's always with the, what did you say?
Well, I'm glad you're happy with that.
Hi there. My name is John Lucci, and I just live at 935 North 17th Street. I would like to know what has been done to help my neighbor at 929 North 17th Street, because he hasn't done what he was supposed to do. So I would like to have an answer. And how high is the bamboo actually supposed to be? I mean, he has it over 25 feet.
I believe we discussed this just a couple of weeks ago, where there were some.
Letters were sent. Letters were sent, but we've been actually in contact with the state. They had said it's probably going to take them a little bit longer until they get to the point where they're going to be taking over. So actually, the person that Tom spoke with, with the state, they worked in conjunction and sent letters. Obviously, we have to send notices first, but they were noticed, and Tom Harper is on it.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Dylan Ringer, Allentown. Am I allowed to say anything about the marijuana situation?
No, that's on the agenda tonight.
So I can't say anything about that at all?
No, that's a lot, so.
Okay. Sorry about that. My next.
We know you're for it, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm a degenerate, Roger, you know that. The first thing here is, we talked about this budget. I heard 3 million. Okay, then I hear 4 million, then I hear 5 million, whatever. I think the only person, there's about three or four people that had it right. I think Mr. Hyman added perfectly what our deficit probably is. And I think Mr. Hunziger, and I think Mr. Hirschman and Tommy Hahn know more about the budget than any of you people or him here in the city of Allentown. And they're willing to help for free on this budget. We've got a hell of a problem here. You just raised, you just put in this water tax. Did we or didn't we not put in a water tax?
Well, it was put in, we all in, but.
We put in a water tax, okay? Now the mayor's saying we have to have a property increase tax. Now how many taxes can these people here in the city afford? We can't afford it here. The older people can't afford it here. I mean, somebody has to look at cutting something. I see where this gentleman said we can't cut anything out of the budget. We can't. Is that right or wrong?
Do you want me to respond?
Thank you, pardon?
I'm asking council if they want me to respond.
If that question was addressed to you, if you feel the, if you have an answer?
Sure. What I wrote was, is that the only place in which cutting could be done was in personal living. We have bone to bone and everything else, and the only other place to cut is there. That's what I said.
As a business owner that's been successful for over 50 years and balanced every budget, there is no budget that you cannot cut. There are cuts that could be made to a budget, okay? And the other thing is, who made up this report about the city vehicles? Why the hell did it take so long for this? Why? We were asking him for this, how long? Right here, you have how much money that's wasted. Why has it taken so long for this stuff? And I'm not blaming you, Mr. Zuchel. This is another bureaucracy here in the city where we're wasting money. Look at this thing. Please look at it. Thank you.
Can I respond to Mr. Ringer? Yes. Were you, you were here on Monday night? Yes, I was. Did you get it printed out? Yes, I did. Okay, 3.993094, that's the structural deficit. So you can make all the speculations you want, about 8 to 10 million, 10 to 12 million. That's the structural deficit. And the bottom line is, you said I was going to raise property taxes. It's an option.
So you're going to balance it, right? On that, how else are you going to balance it?
I'm working on that.
But you didn't say in the paper, you were going to raise, you possibly were going to raise property taxes?
Always an option.
After we get this, after we just got this water tax?
And hold it. And Mr. McLean and I voted, and I'm a strong word, just for your record, okay? There are many options, okay? It is May. We'll present a vote in November, and we'll see where we're at. But you're making speculations far in advance.
No, I'm not. I think Mr. Hyman was right on. Thank you.
A political announcement, Mr. Ringer? Sir?
Hi, my name's Marty McLean, Allentown resident for 32 years, retired. Retired ASD school teacher and coach. And on the lighter side, I would like to talk to you about pickleball tonight for a couple of minutes. It is one of the fastest-growing games in the country, and it has been for several years. It's extremely popular with folks like myself and a lot of people I see around, 55 and over crowd. But it's also popular, getting more and more popular with younger folks as well. It's a neat little game on a smaller-sized tennis court that you play with an oversized ping pong paddle and a wiffle ball. So it's a cheap game to play, and all you need is a place to play it. I started working with a young guy at the recreation department. Some of you may know him. His name's Chris Hendricks, terrific guy. And he said, he got me going with, we put some lines out on the courts of Roosevelt School, or not the school, but the park. And those lines turned out to be temporary. They weathered away. But we did start teaching some lessons there. That led to doing some clinics at the Y, teaching regularly now, pickleball at the Active Life Center. So we're cranking out a lot of pickleball players. And we don't have basically any place outdoors to play. And let me tell you how locally how much this is growing. Two years ago, I would have to call some friends up and say, hey, let's meet out of Prater Park. But they've got a couple of courts. We'll get together and play. Now, go out, go drive by Prater Park. It's right behind the Charple Drive-In. There's three courts out there. Go out there any morning between 9:00 and 10:00. The courts will be full. There'll be 10 people waiting to play. So when I talked with Chris, you know, we talked about Roosevelt, and then I believe somebody from the parks department said to him, hey, there's a lot of open mechanical space on all park, at Percy Route. And so we kind of put together a rough design for that, to get some pickleball courts in. And I think it would be a great thing. It's a great activity for people who maybe are no longer able to play tennis or racquetball. And my wife and I teach the lessons for free. We're glad to get deep involved in it. So if we could get your support on getting some courts built to play outdoors, I just think would be wonderful. You're all invited. Be glad to teach you the game if you haven't played it, as well as everybody out here. It's just a great, fun game, and you will leave laughing every time. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Jan Towne-Hawn, 26 TV, Chinon Street. I believe a copy of this was mailed to council members about a CAFRE report that didn't show the correct amount of money in a fund. And so, being one of the people that have been asking where the 1.7 billion is, that alluded the CAFRE report, and then they found it missing, and then it was gone, and then it disappeared. Again, I'm asking for that information along with at least three years of the bank accounts, so we can do our own study and present it to the council and give council the opportunity to correct where we're wrong. And if not, have Glazier, the controller, verify the questions we want through an audit, saving the idea that we don't need a forensic audit to find out what's going on. So a free, a free offer to the city to let us do this. I don't know why there's such a hard time to get this information. We've been asking for a while. And I think the information should just, give you a call tomorrow, write this down, or email me the information, and we can start the process. In this, they're saying that the CAFRE report didn't get the information. So as we compare what this city does, or where that city does, or wherever we go for reference points, here's one that says the CAFRE board and the method of calculating lost $33 million.
Thank you, Ms. Don. Ms. Don, just stay there, please. And you can stay, you can stay. You asked for this many times, and I talked to the finance director. He is working on it. I think we asked for it before, and you, can you repeat the answer you gave me last time?
Well, first of all, thank you. It was the CAFRE board itself that found the $33 million problem.
No, I'm not.
No, I am, however, going to say that at this point, because that is the exact opposite of what the gentleman said.
What I'm asking is basically about the 1.7 million thousand.
Yes, the capital reconciliation process, which we are working with Zelenkovsky, Axelrod, the independent auditors that you have selected to help us with our CAFRE. We are going through some final details on that, and I have a pretty good idea of what happened with the capital accounts going back quite a few years. We're going to make sure that we have everything in place with the auditors to be sure that their understanding and our understanding is correct. And I'm going to talk to the mayor about it as well before we bring anything up publicly, because this is, this is a serious issue.
Yes, and I understand. And you said that last time, so that's why I'm asking you again. So can you give us an idea, because it keeps asking every meeting? So just so we can put it to rest, can you give us an idea of when we should be able to get that answer? Probably through the CAFRE report?
This will be addressed, if not in the CAFRE report, before that point.
So we're talking about the CAFRE report due on June 30?
Yes.
Would you get it by June 30, right?
No, later than that, yes.
All right, so please don't ask anyone to June 30, because you're going to get the same answer. So they are working on it. We should get it by June 30. Now, let's go back to the issue of the account reconciliation. When, I mean, and I know that, I'm putting you on this bad, Mr. Glazier, but I know that we are about five months behind on the account reconciliation to see. Can you give us an idea how we can get, bring that up to date, so we are not five months behind? And that's not your issue. I understand that. I want to put that on you. It's an issue that's been going on with the city for years, but we're in a different era.
I would say that I think we're working on January now, which, while not as good as it should be, is better than it has been in the past. So, you know, I understand this has been a point of concern and a point of contention, but Treasury has made some progress this year. And if I could just one point of clarification, the $33 million that Mr. Hahn alluded to, or actually wasn't alluding at all, it was a statement, is not the city of Allentown. It's the city of Philadelphia. And they have that because they don't reconcile their cash accounts at all. And here we do it on a, you know, on a monthly basis, so that does not apply to us. It's not Allentown. And I want to be very, very clear about that.
So in regards to, just going back, so because I asked that question by Mr. Hunziger, Mr. Hahn, and Mr. Hirschman, the three H's of this. When do you think, do you need support? You know, do you need another person to help you reconcile this, or is this a structural issue? Can you, you know?
The way it works, the way it works is the Treasury does, puts everything together, and we audit those reports. You know, once we have all the information, it only takes us a couple of days to do it. And I will say that it is a very collaborative effort between my office and Treasury. And just reiterate, I mean, I'd really like to be ideally, you know, within, let's say, 90 days. We're not there yet, but we have made progress over the past year. And that, you know, 2017 is done. They're ready for the audit. We're already working on 2018.
So in about 90 days, you think you can get us?
No, I'd like to be at 90 days, so.
But in 90 days, can you be at 90 days?
Pardon?
In 90 days, can you be at 90 days? Because you're actually in 160 days now.
If I get the information, I can do it. So it really depends on what Treasury and Finance rate will do. And let me reiterate again that. And let me reiterate again, that they've made progress this year. We're not, they're not, it's not a perfect situation, but they're making progress to getting to more timely reporting.
So let me just cross, so do you think, Mr. Hershman, that in ninety days, we can get it to ninety days?
I have rearranged staff responsibilities in my office as to what is going to happen with the bank reconciliation process. I can say affirmatively that it's going to be caught up a lot closer to actual time than it has been in the previous two years I've been here.
How long would that take?
I, we're going to, the audit process always absorbs a great deal of time, but the fact, as Mr. Glazier pointed out, that we're already working on the January reconciliations, something that had not been done the last couple of years during the audit process, so we're at least getting it, we're getting ahead of the game a little bit, not adequately, but better than we have been.
I know, I need a day, I keep asking, but fine, I want, I want to find out, you need help in your department to do this, so you can get the books reconciled, because what happens is, and I can understand that, what happens is, we don't know what's in those books unless they're reconciled.
I will be getting back to you with a specific date on that.
Okay, so next week?
I hope, I will be, next time that we're, we sit down, that's when we make calls, we'll talk about it.
Okay, we have a meeting on the sixth at five fifteen.
We will talk about it then, I'll be ready for you.
That's your answer.
I'm sorry that my time got erased. The only thing I.
Time is already, but go ahead.
The only thing that I want to mention is, is it legal to audit something that hasn't been gone through the process of reconciliation? And in other words, I don't know how, when Mr. Hershman just admitted that in the past the audit went through and the reconciliation wasn't done. He just, that's what he said, we can hold the tape back.
He didn't say it that way. Go ahead, Ms. Don, so repeat what you said.
What I said was, we're catching, we're starting to move forward on the twenty-eighteen reconciliations at a faster pace than we've done beforehand. All of the twenty-seventeen reconciliations are complete, and they're being audited appropriately. All of that is done.
They're making strides, and I think in two weeks, when we have the June meeting, Budget and Finance, you get a clearer date on where we're gonna be, at least three months ahead.
Thank you.
Probably three months behind, I should say.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Glazier, I don't want to put you on the spot either, but maybe at the next meeting, you can update us on Mr. Hirschman's concern, are we getting the money we're supposed to be getting from the Parking Authority?
I don't know that I'll be able to answer by then, but I will say that we have started a parking ticket revenue audit and process low. I don't have a completion date on it yet, but it's a fair question, and I know council is certainly interested in it, and we probably, we started a couple months ago. Okay, so thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anybody else for courtesy on the floor? Seeing nobody, Mr. Hanlin, approval minutes.
March fourteenth and March twenty-third. Comment, please.
All right, reports from committee. Budget and Finance, Mr. Greedy, I think we just had it pretty much.
Yes.
Did you get your chance to speak again?
I would, thank you, Mr. President, I would just repeat it, that we have a Budget Meeting, Budget and Finance Committee Meeting on Monday, where we discuss several bills, and some of those bills are in the, in the agenda tonight, so we continue, we have a scheduled meeting for June sixth at five fifteen, where we're gonna discuss the April Budget and Finance Report, and also the five-year plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greedy. Community and Economic Development, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, and we don't have a formal meeting scheduled at this point. However, we did have scheduled for tomorrow a tour with the Alton Preservation League of their facilities and the West Park neighborhood. However, because of the Lehigh County Authority meeting tomorrow night, Ms. Alpha and Mr. Greedy and I changed the time and date for that, so we're gonna be meeting with them in two weeks, on May, excuse me, thirty-first, starting at six PM, and this is going to be at their warehouse, which I believe is fifteen eighteen West Walnut, but you can search at the Alton Preservation League. As I said, a tour of their facilities and the West Park Historic Neighborhood. It's open to any members of council, any members of the administration, and certainly any members of the public. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Human Resources Administration appointments, Ms. Alpha.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on May eighth prior to the committee of the whole. The Solicitor's Office is reviewing two bills, franking privilege and direct report bills. That's it.
Thank you very much, and I believe there are some appointments on the agenda for this evening. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Motta.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, a future meeting has not been scheduled.
Thank you, Ms. Motta. Public Safety, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met this evening at five thirty. At that time, it was discussed the vehicle take-home policy, which we are revising. Again, I want to commend my colleague, Ed Zuchel, who did a great job putting this together, and we're gonna wait ninety days and allow the administration to weigh in on it, and then at some point, time in the future, we'll begin to come to a resolution and finalize a change to the ordinance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hendricks. Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental, I'm sorry, Public Works, Mr. Zuchel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last meeting, and there's no future meeting set.
Thank you, Mr. Zuchel. Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations Strategy, that's me, same thing, we have not met, we do not have a meeting scheduled. Controllers, report, you didn't, you're on, you're on the.
I'm on the update.
We'll hold you for next meeting. Communications, we have a proclamation. Is Dennis Pearson here?
Yes. Like what? There's some time back.
Dennis, when did you ever, yeah, when did you ever not come up to talk?
Right.
Anyhow, this, I'll read, I'll read this. Whereas the mayor and the city council desire to recognize Dennis Pearson a lifelong resident in the City of Valentine, and whereas Dennis Pearson has been active in many organizations in his neighborhood and throughout Lehigh County, and whereas Dennis Pearson is a graduate of Louis E. Darrow High School and holds a bachelor's science degree education in education from Coopstown, State University of Masters of History in Lehigh University, I'll drop down. Anyhow, the mayor and the city council thank Dennis Pearson and wish him well as he begins a new life in Lehigh and PA. Now therefore, bear resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize the contributions Dennis L. Pearson has made to his community and to this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Dennis, thank, thank your last couple minutes before we move to Lehigh.
Well, I just make this observation that I have to move to get recognized. Thank you very much.
We were hoping you wouldn't notice. That is your proclamation right here, thank you, best of luck to you. All right, just for the record, that will be the only applause tonight when we move into, when we move into our hot topics here, there will be no signs, no whistling, no clapping, we will make decisions based on.
Just one quick comment, Mr. President, regarding Dennis. Mike, where are we gonna get our words of wisdom from hereon?
All right, we've had our fun, we've had our fun for the evening, now we gotta get to work. Proclamation, we have appointments.
Yes, we do, Mr. President. We have several tonight. We have Pam R. Smith for Human Relations, his expiration date will be ten for his appointment, ten twenty-five, two thousand nineteen. Do I have any comments from my colleagues on Human Relations for Pam Smith?
Gonna be a better guy to the job.
There you go, there's one. Anyone else?
I think he's great. Thank you for all the serving.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to comment that Mr. Smith graduated with me from high school. You go way back, and he has been very involved with the City Recreation Bureau. In fact, just a couple weeks ago, he volunteers his time, he was helping out with the home run competition out at Allen High School. This is something he does voluntarily, and I give him a lot of credit for that, so I think he's a great appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
Since you mentioned the recreation, should we just combine the Human Relations and Recreation Board for Mr. Smith, and do them both together, same time?
Okay, he's been appointed to the Recreation Board, the expiration, expiration date will be two twenty twenty-three, so I guess my colleagues have already, do I have any comments from the public on the appointment of Mr. Smith?
I just have to say, Mr. Smith's gonna be on a Recreation Board longer than I'm gonna be sitting here, probably.
Free, yeah.
It is, Mike.
All right, Mr. Smith, would you like to come up and say something?
Yes, I would. Good evening to the town, mayor. I'd like to say thank you for the appointment. I think I know I will be a good asset, because I know the equality of the city, born, being born and raised here, and I really do look forward to it. Again, I thank you.
Thank you.
Does we have to call for votes?
Thank you very much.
Comment, say?
I would prefer voting on all of them, not on one.
Oh, we're gonna vote all?
Once, yeah.
All right, all right. We also have the Civil Service Board Pastor Gus Alcall, his expiration date will be one twenty-one twenty-one. Do I have any comments from my colleagues on this?
The only, the only thing I'd like to comment is, why don't you say his term expires instead?
I said that from the beginning, I said the term expires, you understand, it's not his expiration.
All I have to say is, I know Pastor Gus for many, many years, I worked with him when I was on the police department, great asset for the state, so.
Pastor, are you here?
Sorry, Cynthia.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to say that he's wonderful, he does a lot for the community, he has a great clinic, and he serves, you know, people that, you know, a lot of poor people, and every time there's a need, he's there, serving.
Anyone else from, anyone from the public? Is Gus here? Pastor? All right. The next one is for Civil Service Board also, is Robert Velez, and his appointment expiration is one twenty-one, two thousand nineteen. Any comments from my colleagues? Did I do that right?
Let me just take a second to say, I know Mr. Velez, and he and his wife do a wonderful, wonderful event for the community, they do a, an event over at Jordan Park, which is basically, basically bringing a number of people, but they also do a parade throughout the city, leading to Jordan Park, and he and his wife have done great for our community.
Anyone else?
They also do a great job with Noche de Río, and everyone gets involved with the Puerto Rican parade, so they do a great job, they are a good asset to other community, we give diversity.
Any comments from the public? Is Mr. Velez here? Next is Janet Keschel, her appointment expiration is one twenty-one nineteen. Have any comments? I'd like to make a comment about Janet. Not only does she attend so many of our council meetings, she's very aware of what goes on in our community, and she is always there for help, helping individuals, she throws a great party, and she's an asset. Janet is, is one of the good ones in our community.
I agree, and she is normally at the council.
Yeah, she's normally.
I think she couldn't get a seat tonight, so I don't care.
I would say that she and her husband David do a wonderful job, especially in the South Mountain area, they have the Black Watch Group over there, and, I'm sorry, yeah, and they do great, great things for our community, just like the rest of the, I didn't get a chance to say anything about Mr. Smith, but he does a wonderful job as well, so I think we have a great group of people here today.
Any comments?
I agree. No, I just, I guess point of clarification, because the plumbing examining board, he isn't on there, it's on the memo, so do we want to do that separately or together?
Why you add that on? Plumber's Examining Board. I don't see it. The printing is very small. Plumbing Examining Board? It's Michael. Presnick? Presnick? His expiration is, appointment expiration is five one twenty twenty. Do I have any comments from my colleagues on the appointment? Any comments from the public? Seeing none? Can we have a comment, say? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlin. Okay, now we go to ordinances for final passage here. Bill seventeen.
Bill seventeen, this is ordinance providing for the penalties related to possession and personal use of marijuana and the personal possession of marijuana.
There we go. Okay, we're gonna open it up to council first, and then we're gonna open it up to the public. I know we have a lot of people here that are passionate about it, please keep your comments short, because there's a lot of people here. We're gonna try and limit it, if you're, if you were at the committee meeting, you, I think you know what the vote was, so if you have something new to say, please say it, if not, just don't keep rehashing the same thing that we do on, okay? Thank you. All right, and we'll first open it up to council. And again, also no applause or whistling or.
As I said last week, I am sponsoring this bill, voting for this bill, and love to see this bill pass. To decriminalize something like cannabis, I think is well overdue. Too many people have this hanging over their head, if they got caught with a small amount from the sixties until present day, and I don't think this should be on anyone's record as summary offense, it's still illegal, but a summary offense, in my estimation, is something is the way we should go, and I hope that my colleagues feel the same. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Alpha. Mr. Hendricks? No? Mr. Greedy?
Actually, I'd just like to say there's another resolution, but it's assisted to this resolution, kind of closely related, that it's gonna come at a later time, so after we vote on this, probably you may want, someone, someone you may want to stay in here about it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Motta?
Yes, I'd like to say something. As Martin Luther King Junior once said, "One has the moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." So tonight, I am in agreement with Dr. King. I am in support of the equitable applications of the law. The discrimination of marijuana will provide justice, as well as provide for opportunities for hundreds, hundreds whose lives have been marginalized and many destroyed due to labor of the month legislation. So today, media portrays hundreds of individuals as victims of what has been so neatly packaged as a health crisis, the abuse. We all empathize with all of those afflicted by this, however, let's not turn a blind and convenient eye to all of those who we have previously been termed as drug users and criminals. My support of this legislation is serving notice that under my guard, all communities need to be and will be treated in the same manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Motta. Mr. Zuchel?
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Zuchel. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. In echoing my co-sponsors' words in this, the time is now, there's always a reason to say it's not the time to do something, but the reality is, until we take action, until we prioritize true change, nothing's going to change. We know unequivocally that scientific evidence proves that what was previously thought, what was previously taught to us all as children, and throughout our lives, and when we became adults, and we became parents, and public servants, and everything else, the facts, or what we thought were the facts, that were being taught to us are incorrect. They have been disproven by peer-reviewed, independent scientific research. And in this day and age, when we can't necessarily trust what we see, when social media, when things we see on the internet are not necessarily truthful, and we don't know, independent, peer reviewed scientific research is the one immutable thing that we can look at, it's the one thing that we can say unequivocally is as standard, as the sun rises. It's the one thing that we can say unequivocally is as standard as the sun rising and the gravity that keeps us on the planet. It's not just about the scientific research, it's also about people. All of us, each of you, everyone who's been affected by this law. We heard some heart-wrenching testimony about people who were affected by this. I think the one that affected me the most, though, has to be a young woman whose father actually is a retired Alton Police Officer, who spoke about the fact that because of $5 of marijuana that she was found with and was convicted of a misdemeanor, she's not only having this follow-up her entire life, every job interview, every time she goes to look at any type of interaction in a professional sense, but she's also prevented, in what I think is a horribly ironic twist, from working in the newly legalized medical marijuana industry because of $5 and a mistake. Each and every one of us, and each and every one of us sitting up here, has all made mistakes, some larger than others. But I don't think any of us would want something that is a simple mistake to haunt us for the rest of our lives. So, that's why I am proud to support this bill. That's why I am proud to vote for this bill. And I have to say thank you to Councilwoman Afa for sponsoring this, and thank you to Councilman Greedy and Councilwoman Mota for co-sponsoring this, and allowing me the privilege of co-sponsoring it with you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would encourage all of my colleagues to vote for this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We'll open it up to the public, and it's going to be...